The Imperial Planting Condition Order. A roll call.
Commissioner Rivera?
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Here.
Commissioner Abadi?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Harvey?
Here.
Chairperson Hammerstein?
Here. Oh, stand with the President. Oh, I'm here.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Uh, adjustments to the agenda?
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? No adjustments. Thank you. Public appearances. Well, I'll read it anyway. B one, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the count, the commission concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairman. And at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairman reserves the right to place a limit on each person's presentation to three minutes. Are there anybody here that wishes to address us on matters not on the agenda? Two guys in the back? All right. Moving on, consent calendar. Minutes for September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yeses, sort of yeses. Is there any discussion or otherwise I need a motion to approve them, approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, just a couple of points. Selling yours on the, I've already notified the clerk.
I'll second that.
Move and seconded, vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Public hearing, discussion, action, recommend, deny. D one, subject, continue public hearing, discussion, action, continue use permit for CUP twenty-two dash zero one. For quality dismantling to allow for the operation of an auto dismantling and towing facility located at six zero four East Barione Boulevard. APN zero six four dash zero seven two dash zero zero one. All the committee, Imperial Planting Condition Order. A roll call.
Commissioner Rivera?
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Here.
Commissioner Abadi?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Harvey?
Here.
Chairperson Hammerstein?
Here. Oh, stand with the President. Oh, I'm here.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Uh, adjustments to the agenda?
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? No adjustments. Thank you. Public appearances. Well, I'll read it anyway. B one, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the count, the commission concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairman. And at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairman reserves the right to place a limit on each person's presentation to three minutes. Are there anybody here that wishes to address us on matters not on the agenda? Two guys in the back? All right. Moving on, consent calendar. Minutes for September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yeses, sort of yeses. Is there any discussion or otherwise I need a motion to approve them, approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, just a couple of points. Selling yours on the, I've already notified the clerk.
I'll second that.
Move and seconded, vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Public hearing, discussion, action, recommend, deny. D one, subject, continue public hearing, discussion, action, continue use permit for CUP twenty-two dash zero one. For quality dismantling to allow for the operation of an auto dismantling and towing facility located at six zero four East Barione Boulevard. APN zero six four dash zero seven two dash zero zero one. This time we will resume public hearing. Staff report, additional comments?
Some staff revised the conditions of appro- applicant. All the conditions of approval.
Close to the mic, we're not-
He understands all the conditions of approval, um, today. One more item was revised. Um, with city manager's recommendation, I just presented the applicant with the revision of letter U. Um, letter U was revised as follows. The applicant shall ensure noise levels meet all the requirements outlined in the City of Imperial's noise element. Noise levels are not to exceed seventy-five decibels within industrial zones. If complaints arise, the City of Imperial may impose noise pollution mitigation measures on the business. Mr. Sam agreed and signed the revised conditions of approval and is present to answer any questions.
And as promised since the last meeting, there is a, I believe, a red line, so you could see. Based on your conversation, we tried to incorporate every single comment that was made, uh, but that way it'd be easy to follow.
Right, that was in the, the previous CUP, which I noticed, uh, when I read it. Everybody else go through the original? So the one we have here in front of us now is the cleaned up version of that, which looks pretty, pretty good compared to what we started with. Any additional? Well, before we get into commissioners' comments, do you gentlemen have anything additional you'd like to say? Uh, before we get into more commissioner discussion on this?
I just wanted to say, good to see you all, thank you. And you guys are awesome, just that. Because last time the comments you guys made, actually, I didn't go through it very well, but it made a lot of sense and it helped me a lot, so. Thank you so much. I really appreciate all your helps and you guys are really fair and just, that's very good, good job.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We've been called a lot of things also, I'm not sure is one of the higher ones. Thank you very-
Trying to thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm sure we may have some discussion, we may need you to answer some questions additionally.
Sure, sure, yeah, I'll be right here. Do you want me to have a seat or stand here?
Um, feel free to sit down just in case, I mean, no point in standing if you don't have to.
No, no, I don't mind.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. Um, so commissioners, we have any additional, uh, discussion topics on the renewed or revised, uh, CUP? I think a lot of it's been met with what we discussed before, but I'm open to hearing any additional comments. From anybody? I'll be quiet now while you think about what you want to do.
One thing, I think at the beginning you said the address six oh four, it's six oh one, I just want to make sure.
I, I, it's very possible I may have misread it.
Six oh-
It's six oh one?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I wouldn't be surprised if I misread it, but in this case it's nice to know I'm not wrong.
Person, I, I, I think we've all covered these comments before, the only thing that I would like to reiterate to the, the applicant is that there is still some hesitation, I do still have some hesitation. And I, I mean, we're doing the best we can to make sure it goes well, but I just implore you. This is the entrance to our city. And I, whenever you talk about putting a storage yard or something like that at the, and a major thoroughfare into our city. And that's what people are going to see when they come into the city, I implore you, please, do not turn this into a junkyard.
Oh, no, no, no.
Or something that's going to make it look bad coming into the city, it's just, it's, we're, we're trying, we're doing everything we can to make the ci- the City of Imperial a better place and make it look nice and whenever we, I think in my head of putting a storage yard right at the entrance. That's, I'm, I'm, I'm cautious about it.
No, as soon as I, actually, if, if my business goes well, and then as soon as I have some, like, I ha- save up some money, you know, I probably going to be trying to build some like, um, prefab's metal buildings around the yard, that way there's no, nothing is visible whatsoever, you know what I'm saying? I, I already have some, but it's going to be even more like, I'm going to probably try to, you know, keep everything indoor, nothing outdoor, that way there's not going to be any issue whatsoever. Thank you.
Abadi, you have anything?
Um, I put through it, um, both the redlined and the final. It looks like they removed the request for the masonry wall, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
And the street too.
And the alley on the pay street in the back, I saw that too. Those, those are just major, major capital investments.
I know it's the-
That a, a, a business can do maybe down in the future one day after they've been successful for a number of years. If it's beneficial for everyone and, and all the neighbors, in my opinion, would be, uh, it would be for, fair for them to participate. With respect to the, at least the paving of the road.
Yeah, their businesses, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
And I noticed the, I think there was something about plants, the plants have been removed. From here, I haven't seen anything about any shrubbery or anything on here, I thought there was something in the last one, maybe I've mistaken, I don't know. Um, which is, considering the city has a hard enough time growing grass, it's kind of hard to ask somebody to grow a tree in an industrial part of the city. Commissioner Rivera?
Um, the vehicles you brought, bring in, they've already been defueled, uh, transmission fluid, all those fluids have already been removed.
All the vehicles I'm bringing in are from Hawaii and Guam, so the, uh, ships take everything out before they even bring them because it's a hazard for them and then when it gets here, it's already, doesn't have anything in it.
Okay, yeah, for sure, I, I totally understand that.
The only thing that's still in it is the battery, which they already took it out and they put it on usually the passenger seat, so what I do, I just take that out also.
Okay, um, you guys have, uh, no cash on the, on the premises, I, I watched the, um, the meeting, the last time you said that everything's done online, uh, so that eliminates the foot traffic now as for cash and all that, and I asked because of security, police and all that.
Yes, yes, that's true, that's true, exactly, and if, um, if we ever do anything, it, it would be through the credit cards and, you know, that kind of transaction, not, not cash.
What's the turnaround time on the, on the actual bodies that you, uh, that you keep on the premises? Uh, again, we, we've, um, the concerns are that we're going to s- the picture or mental pictures that cars are going to start stacking up, what's the rotation on that?
So the first thing was that the, the fire department is actually forcing me not to stack them on top of each other, so they're going to be just one vehicle at a level, and on the last meeting I showed some pictures that the, the fence are pretty tall, so if it's just one car, there's no visibility from outside. Now, um, other than that, also in the conditional use permit, uh, it's, uh, limiting me only to up to ninety days of keeping a vehicle on the yard. So, um, I will, I will definitely remove them before then, but, but that's just a limit.
Ninety days?
Max.
Unrealistic?
No.
I mean, it's ninety days, should be more than enough time to strip everything you want off, I mean, if you're as ambitious as you say, or you should have, you should be stripping those cars faster than a teenager's on a street side.
That's true. Yeah. No, because what it is, is that I, I take all the parts out and I start, uh, uh, what is it called, storing them in my warehouse over there, right? And then I sell them, right? Now, I, I'm going to take everything off pretty fast and sell the shell to the SA, which is a, a recycler, right? So what's going to left is just the parts and the parts are going to go out pretty fast, but even if the parts take longer to go, the car is already gone, it's just parts inside shelves.
The chassis and-
Yeah, like, like a starter or whatever, you're, you know, just not, not that big a stuff. Yeah, the chassis would be gone probably even before all the parts are gone.
Question, on number six. There shall be no outdoor storage of impounded vehicles. What you're buying is, I don't think it's called impounded. Right? Your inventory is not a result of impounding those vehicles, right? I think that's probably addressing if you're doing towing. And you're, uh, and it's become impounded, so there's a distinction. Yeah.
The word impounded.
Right, because your, your primary business is dismantling, right? You're buying a, a widget and you're taking it apart?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Your, your business isn't towing and impounding. Does, that, I think it was a s- as you called a side business?
Well, it's definitely an error because I mean, if a vehicle wasn't impounded, it could technically be stored outside if it wasn't impounded. And that would, then he wouldn't be in violation. So, that's, that's probably an error and-
So it would be both impounded and-
Yeah. St- so it should be storage of any-
Any vehicle, yeah, yeah, I think the impounded should be just like crossed out, it should be just a storage of vehicles within the project site.
Yeah, I don't think we need to include any, just we need to just-
Yeah, because once we say vehicles, probably include-
Cause that's not a problem for you, right?
Yeah, 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 that's not a problem with me, but I, I probably won't see anything impounded there.
Right, but see-
But you're absolutely right, it's going to be a lot of cars that I'm going to be buying, they are not impounded.
You'd be restricted only to impound, so therefore the other vehicles that you buy from Guam and Hawaii, you couldn't have them outside.
That's true.
You could, if it, that's a technicality that the legal eagles missed. Well, thanks, thanks you, uh, Commissioner Abadi for catching that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody? So I'm going to ask you to just, mostly for my own curiosity sake. Um, I'm assuming if you're disassembling these cars, you're going to be pulling out the engines and tr- engines and transmissions too and selling those. Just you're going to sell them as like whole engines or do you break them down and sell the components?
No, I sell them as a whole engine, I actually have these pallets that, um, I'm going to be bringing in. And then, um, when I take out the engine, I put it on the pallets, I'm going to wrap them all, and then I already talked to R and L, it's a carrier units. So all like body shops or mechanic shops or whoever, like, they're going to order from me, I put them on the pallet, the pallet goes in the truck and then they take off.
Okay, I just want to know, cause if I ever need an engine down the road, I could come to you and say-
No, 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 it's going to be an engine as a whole, yeah, 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 it's going to be an engine. And it's, it's funny, all my cars are going to be, my, my main goal for the business is not, I don't, I'm not going to have any old cars. It's like, I'm going to be buying all like two thousand nineteen and up, so it's going to be like all brand new cars that coming in, they just probably had were involved in an accident or they became like their titles, sometimes estates make the titles only for dismantlers, so nobody else can buy them. That way I can buy them and it's, it's for parts only and I can just like part them out and then just-
Right.
Get rid of the rest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question, you're just going to stay with vehicles, not pickup trucks?
Uh, yes, pickup trucks.
Oh, oh, see, that, I'm interested, okay, for businesses, okay, get your website, okay?
Oh, sure.
An hour, an hour you're doing business that we haven't gotten to. All right, anything else from anybody? Not, I'm going to close public hearing if there's nothing else. All right, closing public hearing at this time, six fifty-one. So moving on to recommended action, approval resolution, PC twenty twenty-two dash zero seven. Resolution put-
Oh, sorry.
No, that's one line down, I haven't got that yet, I haven't got that far yet.
All right, sorry. You're right.
No, a resolution of the Planting Commission Approval Condition Use Permit, CUP twenty-two dash zero one.
Okay.
To allow the, uh, operation of an auto dismantling towing business located at six zero one. Dress is right there, East Barione Boulevard, APN number zero six four, dash zero seven two, dash zero zero one. Project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, under section fifteen, three zero one of the guidelines. Existing facilities.
And, and could I just suggest also with the change to line two of number six in the CUP, to remove the word impounded? As an amendment to that, if you're comfortable.
So we need a, 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 a motion to approve, I think issue, use and permit twenty-two dash zero one with the caveat of removing impounded from line six. Of the, uh, exhibit A, is there a motion? All right, it has been moved to approve it, twenty-two dash zero one with the removal of impound in line six of the CUP, is there a second? We move and second, we call for the vote. There it is. It might not take. Yeah, pushed too quick.
Motion passes five zero.
Sir, you're in business.
Welcome to, welcome to Imperial.
Thank you, thank you.
Give your business a word, seriously.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, seriously.
You know my address, so, don't go to six oh four, go to six oh one.
Leave your email address.
Sure.
Good luck, sir, thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much, thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to ma- I might get to dinner after all. Okay. So now we're to E reports, commissioners' reports. Commissioner Mendoza, do you have anything to report?
I have nothing to report at this point, Mr. Chairperson, thank you.
Commissioner Abadi?
I have two points, one, and they're both questions. First, uh, when are they going to start the landscaping on Ayton Road to the west of the block that they did? Second, okay, so I'll wait for it, and then the second thing is the hotel, that, uh, I remember a year ago um, came before this panel to get permission with the new buyers to move forward on it. I have heard from some people who live in this town that they understand that it will become a residence for homeless people. Is the current, I guess, um, code or permit allowing for that as long as they are transients? Or a period of time, because that's what a hotel is, it's not a permanent resident, isn't there a period of time, I'm asking?
Well, the, the word transient comes up in a discussion whenever you're talking about hotels because we have something called a transient occupancy tax.
Correct.
It is, that, that word is used in the context of the tax and not in who the occupants are going to be.
Okay.
We, there are, there are two things that, that, that I would say, uh, put the city in a very good position that that won't occur. There's a conditional use permit, which is very specific about what uses, uh, can, uh, the property can be put to. And we have a separate agreement which goes beyond that, and is very specific about the fact that they, they have to maintain a, a certain level of, of, uh, agreement with a, uh, with a, a cha- uh, chain, uh, and hotel. And maintain, uh, uh, a full service restaurant, full service bar and things like that. So, um, I, I, I would say that the, a discussion about, uh, housing uh, and people other than, uh-
Hotel guests?
Hotel guests, uh, certainly, I, I, isn't in the cards and isn't why, I ca- I, I guess anything is possible, but I would say in, in, on, on the, if you're going to, uh, have a spectrum of possibility, I would say it's, it, that isn't going to happen. I think on, on, anybody who's before you on, on their watch, that isn't going to happen.
What about, um, the illegal aliens that took over the country club? Are these people going to be able to contract with the federal government, house them? According to this conditional use permit?
Um, yeah, I, I would say no, uh, that, a- a- again, that, that yeah, that is, that is a use which isn't contemplated by any agreement that we have with them, nor by the, uh, conditional use permit they have.
I'm with Commissioner Mendoza, that's really a, a prolific location. Back people, um, thinking. To, uh, be a family orientated and, um, where everybody feels, um, it's a positive environment.
And, and I would definitely also recommend, Otona, if we could pull up the conditional use permit and all of the underlying powers that we have related to that and just remind every, I, I haven't looked at it recently, so if you could send it out to everyone and, and so if the public also wants to see it, and then talk about it at the next meeting.
To me and they were concerned.
Yeah, so absolutely.
Lots of things are-
Yeah, and I also-
Lots of things moving, things don't seem to be static.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to look at it, uh, as, I'm sure all the commissioners do as well.
I, I don't think it would be conducive for the hotel company that's coming in to go that route, I think that's not what they're looking at creating.
And I can, and just to add to Mr. Marita's comment, and, and this isn't necessarily in the conditions of approval, but, um, and it, but it is public that the, the franchise that is what that hotel will be is a Cambria, which is a luxury brand of choice hotels. So it's, it's very much going to be at that standard that is defined in the conditions of approval. It is also, uh, defined in the, um, TOT agreement that we have with the hotel, they have to maintain a certain standard. They have to follow certain guidelines and all those things, and so, um, it will, it will set the bar for that north end, so hopefully that reassures, um, our, our residents that it is going to be a, a full service hotel, which we actually don't have, it will have a full service restaurant, bar, all those amenities. Um, so we're, we're looking forward to that, hopefully in the beginning of the year, actually, first quarter of twenty-three.
What was your first one?
And-
What was your first?
Yes, if I can answer the first one.
Yeah, what was your first one?
First one was, uh, landscaping.
Yes, so, um, we are moving forward that, we are just waiting for it to cool off a bit as far as, uh, so we can do the planting, yes. No, our, our parks department is ready, we've secured all of the landscaping materials, um, and, and we are working as far as tree grants. Um, and so some of the, the trees that have been allocated as part of a grant that we went in on a, on a joint jurisdictional um, are going into that area as well, uh, so we're, we're looking forward to that, but we just need to be a little bit cooler so they can survive.
If I could, um, continue on with the subject of the hotel, um, I know that they have that pace center that's coming in, how is that going to be placed and interact with all the people going in and out of the hotel and whatever pads they, they're going to be putting there? Is it going to share parking and we're going to have all these people coming and going, or how does that going to work?
So I think when you, when you look at the hotel itself, it doesn't seem like it's on that large of a, of a piece of property. Um, but there's actually a full twenty-two acres out there, and so where the, the intercare pace center is looking to be placed is actually behind the hotel. Um, so there won't be shared parking in, in that capacity, there, we're looking to have more of the food and beverage type pads that would be affronting the hotel to create more of that kind of synergy there, but it would actually be placed behind that.
And to the Barworth's overrunning that you were talking about, like, cause I play golf at Barworth on occasion. And for what it's worth, that's like making a ton of money for that guy and he's actually able to work you on fixing up the golf course because of it. Because the hotel itself was a dump and nobody would have stayed in it otherwise, so he's actually doing pretty well.
No, people did stay in there.
Well, they did, but it was, I stayed in there once and it was a lot of money for staying at Motel Six.
I understand, but the point is there's people who live out there also.
Well, I understand that, but the, the-
And they didn't get to vote on that.
But the people who own the hotel are are, it's it's providing a huge amount of revenue that's allowing him to bring the country club back up to some standards.
Golf course.
Well, but the point is, is once he can get that back up and then those people leave, he may have enough additional revenue to repair the hotel and make, bring it back up to what it once was.
Is that what he shared?
Yeah, I've actually spoken with the man on a few occasions, yeah, he's he's, he's a real nice guy. Of course, he's, you know, he's also like super rich, so you know, he's just being nice to me because he wants to be.
He wants you to keep on paying the.
Well, his green fees are for for an eighteen hole course, it's pretty low. Of course, it's also a pretty rough course too, it's kinda like playing golf in Africa with a gun. It is a rough course. Anyway, anyway.
Traffic on uh Bogan Villa, uh Blazing Star Ayton. Over the last week, it has kind of simmered, it's it's kind of worked out, I think uh everybody in that area has has kind of started to adjust. Their departure time in the morning, uh plus the encouragement of law enforcement. Going back and forth between Blazing Star, Bogan Villa and all the other responsibilities they have uh in Imperial. Um, again, I will remind everybody that that is temporary. The end of November, am I correct? The end of November, so um, I think that'll work itself out. Um, to some part, um, off subject a little bit, uh the Citizens Academy coming up this weekend. Um, for the interactive meeting and the uh lo- um, toolage on the local government. Um, check the uh city website on that, um, I wanna say thank you to. The local Boy Scouts and Ivy Girls, um, youth. Volunteers for uh going out there and helping out over in uh, uh, was it Edinger Park? Uh park, um, again, I very much promote, uh I. Encourage young people to go out there and and participate and volunteer, um, it's something they can hang their head on later on, say I. Put up that slide or that bench or that shade, um, gives a little ownership back to the young people. Hoping that they continue to engage the community and be a part of it, um. We have the other one coming up, it's uh, that one is Edinger Park?
Here at Eager Park, yes.
Yeah, October eighth.
Every weekend, oh, there's something that's happened, there's something, but yes, October eighth, nine AM.
And that's it for for me on this end. You're up.
Nothing to report at this time. Nothing to report.
Well, I wanna go to dinner, so I won't keep this too long. Um, so first of all, I'm gonna ask about my light again on Fifteenth Street.
Well, we're taking a look at 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 that, um, we gotta get some data uh from P D, from fire. Um, and uh we're getting the cost estimate to to do all of that, so it's taking a little longer than I thought.
I don't know what we need fire and P D concerned with, but I mean, so. The point is, is the light can't just be readjusted, there is some, there's something has to be bought for it. Cause there's timer, I mean, the whole thing's on a timing system, we just can't change the timing system?
Eh, not not really, I mean, yeah, once you take a look at what needs to be completed, then you're gonna realize, like, oh, yeah, it needs a little more. And just a the the timing um system and uh we need to get a traffic engineer on board, um, we don't, we. We don't uh modify any of that, um, if we don't have that, that's that's at least, you know, five thousand dollar.
Cost, uh, cause I just asked if we could do it, I mean, apparently it's.
Yes, so we gotta, so we gotta, I I gotta provide you with all the numbers, everything, I mean, it it's every option that we have, so that you can make a a better decision as a traffic commission. Um, I mean, I can bring the the item and uh uh we have an open discussion, but uh for me, it's better if I. All data.
All right, um, and. And as far as the school providing us with a traffic plan, which I think was we were supposed to get last June. Um, is that, have they, have they, I mean, apparently they've done some things, cause I've seen some signage over there and stuff trying to. Work on solving the problem, have you heard any, I mean, I personally haven't gone over there to see the. Morning debacle or afternoon debacle recently since school started this year, because I just. Either haven't had the time or haven't had enough coffee, one or the other, I can't decide which.
I'll have a place that if.
It is closer, yes. Yes, um, that is true, um, had some this morning, I actually was going to uh. Bring that up, went to the ribbon cutting this morning for the uh Starbucks and um. Fortunately, it was not as hot as it was for the ribbon cutting for McDonald's. So that was a plus, um, uh Commissioner Mendoza was also there, uh. So, you know, uh, but I thought it went very well, I mean, what do you think, I mean, it seemed very pleasant, kind of. There was a lot of people in there and it was like you try to go back in there later and it was like really hard to, it was just hard to me to get to the trash can, let alone, uh, so. I'm just hoping it doesn't, um, I I I do worry about. The other coffee shop we have in town. Which, in my wife's opinion, thinks makes a much better frappuccino than Starbucks makes, but that's just for you all to try, just in case, just throw one out there for them, but. That does concern me a little bit, um, and the last thing I wanna hit is the. Uh, meeting we had, we had, we went through the minutes of it, but we had the meeting. Was it last week? It's kind of been the one we're joint meeting, the meeting we had right after the, was it, has it been two weeks? I've had a lot going on, I've had a lot happen. Um, I thought felt pretty positive about it, I don't know. How you guys felt about it, I felt like they may kind of walked away with maybe not as quite as. Negative as they were when they came in, I'd like to think. Oh, yeah.
It's very crowded.
Do the legal team have any? Any closer to finding out anything about, I'm not asking to divulge anything tonight.
Yeah, no, we we've been working on it quite a bit with a good number of people, and so we don't have a conclusion yet, but we've been, I I think very shortly.
Is it the more lawyers are involved, the longer they act, it takes to get.
We like to slow things down, yeah, no, we're just double checking it, it's a lot of different folks. Yeah, no, we're we're making a lot of progress, we've we've been alone too, it's been doing a lot of work, so, yeah.
All right, um, all right, staff. Go around the room. You have anything to report, anything for us, Tom?
I have nothing to add.
Yes, um, Mr. Chairman and and Planning Commissioners, just very quickly on the subject of the Fifteenth Street signal light. As we, as you might recall, we did have a brief discussion, I think, at some me- number of meetings ago. About about the fact that I think it certainly from a technical or mechanical viewpoint. The the changes you're talking about could be made, the the issue associated with that is, as I, as I recall. What you're looking for is to have a similar arrangement at Fifteenth Street that there is at Worthington.
And neckle.
We currently have a traffic study that is recommending that, at least at Worthington, that change. That that be changed so that it mirrors what happens at Fifteenth Street. So the issues that Mister Mora refers to is having data, having a traffic study. Done to support that that change, beca- because uh we don't wanna make a change to have it only changed back again. I think that's very dangerous, it's like putting a stop sign in and then removing a stop sign, right? People get an expectation. And if you're, and if you're used to having traffic coming at you, stop, and now they're not. There's all those sorts of issues, but it but it is something that's being looked at in terms of. Uh because uh other folks have felt like you do, that that change would significantly. Uh affect in a positive way the the traffic flow over there.
Well, I mean, I appreciate your traffic studies, people's attempt to make move traffic, the. Problem we have with both of those intersections is there's a stop sign, a hundred and fifty feet from. The red light, which means traffic is not going to flow regardless because it has to stop before it can get to the light. So any flow is dead simply because there's a stop signs there, so why worry about it? We need to worry more about moving what traffic we can, so I don't know who your traffic people are, but. You know, of course, they probably got more degrees than I do, which means they're supposed to be smarter than I am, that also means that they also have no common sense, so. But I appreciate that, yeah, I mean, we need to. But I think anything's worth trying for a little bit, as far as confusing people, the light's green or the light's red, you go when it's green, you stop when it's red. And you don't turn in front of other people, but apparently people do that anyway because they haven't read the D M V handbook. So which is the problem we're having right now. So, we need to try something, cause, but it also would help if we would get the school to. Come over to us and talk to us about their issues and maybe we could put it all together into some kind of a. You know, but I guess that's not gonna happen because the schools, there's, it doesn't care about what we think. Anyway. Mister Brown, do you have anything else to add to to staff reports?
Uh, just to to tag on what Commissioner Rivera was talking about as far as the um. Next uh work party or party in the park, as we like to say, um, will be on October eighth and it will be here at Eager Park. And that's a collaboration um through our library with a with a grant, it's a storybook walk. So it's a great way to come and install um the the large books that you would actually be, you know, reading the story as you walk through our park. And and so it's a great collaboration and it'll be a lot of fun, so.
They like be stations with different book stories like.
It'll be one story and you'll be able to read different parts, but we're able to change out the stories, so it'll, it's it's great. Kind of like a kiosk, you know, one of the bulletin boards in that sense, but it's a little bit more interactive and inclusive, so we're excited.
It was a little kid, that sounds like fun.
Yes. It's even fun when you're an adult, too.
I'll throw one last thing out there before I close, um, our next, um. Our first. Street fair, which I always call them street fairs, even though market days, yes, I always use the term street fair, I know it's market days, I always. When is our first market day supposed to be coming up?
October fifteenth. Five PM to nine PM.
You ready? All right.
Everyone's ready to come out and connect for our market day.
All right, well, with that. If there's nothing else, I will close the uh Imperial Planning Commission meeting at seven fourteen.